Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran. I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Rosa Torres.
Present.
Mitchell Moffett.
Present.
Paul Mendez, excused. Kim Lerman, excused. Abel Campos, excused. Dana Crutchfield.
Present.
Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Handler, excused. Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are five members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Spectrum Cable, PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also recorded, and you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video-on-demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table if you wish to follow along. At this time, please silence your cell phones and pagers to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only to be fair but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. First, are there any commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? As noted before, I'm on the Board of Domestic Violence Services, which is one of the applicants for community block grant. Any others? All right. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? We have no audience, so I will go ahead and let the record show that there were no declarations. We, as the Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the record, the official city record that the city council will use to make its decisions. I encourage you to take advantage of this opportunity. The first item on our agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. These meeting minutes were mailed out or provided to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had the opportunity to take a look at them, and I would entertain either discussion questions or a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Commissioner Moffett requests permission to approve the meeting minutes as written.
All right. Then moved by Commissioner Moffett to approve the meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
I seconded.
Commissioner Crutchfield provided a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Let the record show the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. All right. We go into a number of old business items. The first old business item is the Community Development Block Grant Program allocation, MFBGAP 2024-003, and I will turn it over to Ms. Webb to go over that.
Good evening. Planning Commission, tonight we will pick up where we left off at the last meeting held on July 18, 2024. At that meeting, the Planning Commission instructed staff to contact the applicants to determine whether their project could proceed if their project were to receive less funding than initially requested, and clarification on the minimum amount of funding necessary for the project's viability. Additionally, a commissioner requested information regarding the number of individuals served, the unit of measurement, and the CDPG cost per unit. On Tuesday, July 23, 2024, staff emailed all applicants to address the Planning Commission's inquiries. The five responses were included in your packet. This slide represents the information of the number served, unit of measure, and the CDPG cost per unit. This information was included in the applicant's applications and is summarized in the table. For the Penis Park/Pasco Farmers Market, that number is for the past 12 months, and 36% of that number represents visitors from the city of Pasco. For the number on the playground, this is the visitor number for 2023, but from August 2023 to August 2024, the number is 129,600, and this is just for three of the parks, Memorial Park, Sylvester Park, and Volunteer Park, where the ADA equipment would be first-placed. Next slide. These are the 2025 CDPG projects and scores, which is the first column based on the criteria. I have included in your packet the staff report from July 18, which outlines the criteria. The next column is the amount requested. The third column is the average of funds that the applicants have received over the last five years. At the bottom of the screen is how the scores were broken up from A to C, which was how funds were allocated. Next slide. This is option two of the scores. This is the same information as the previous slide, as far as the total score in the first column, amount requested, and average amount of funds received over the past five years. The only difference is how the scoring was broken up into the A from C, which is how funds were allocated. Next slide. This is option one, that the staff committee came up with, which funded a portion for all activities except for one, which staff felt the home art funding would be more suitable for that application. Wanted to remind the commission that with only 677,540 available, and after you take out the admin in Section 108, that only left 292,540 available to fund. So to make it easier to understand, next to the highlighted column is a column named Activity, where each applicant falls into one of the consolidated goals, and the non-CDPG funding is leveraged funding to match what funds the applicant is requesting, which doesn't equate into the rubric as we looked at the budget in the application. Next slide. This is option two. The staff committee removed the activities that received a grade C, and the funds were then distributed between all the Bs. Next slide. This is option three, based on the revised scoring criteria, where a score of 1 through 5 is categorized as a C, 6 through 10 as a B, and 11 or above as an A. Under this option, a greater number of housing and economic development projects have been recommended for funding. This approach aligns with the consolidated plan, council goals, and HUD's emphasis on directing funds towards housing initiatives. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, commissioners. I remind you all that, first of all, the most important criteria is that these funds have specific regulations and designations and criteria prescribed by HUD, and then we've gone and added some additional scoring, which is fine. And so staff has added quite a bit of extra, but these funds are for specific purposes by HUD, and I think these different options kind of reference kind of the different ways we could do this. And I think you also get into the situation where you could try to peanut butter, if you will, across everything, or you could try to go based on the actual scores. So I think, you know, those are all these choices to make, but I think staff has given us three pretty good options to choose from here, depending on where we want to go with this. But option three is, I guess I'd say, the culmination of the multiple kind of, you know, we started last year with one scoring, or there was the original HUD scoring, and then we've added other criteria, which is fine, but option three is continuing to enhance and improve that even further. And so based on that, that's where option three falls. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct.
So I'll open it up for questions, comments, feedback from staff. Our options tonight are, this is old business, there's no public hearing, so our options tonight are to ask questions, continue to discuss, and ideally, we would want to move forward with a decision that we can recommend to council, who ultimately makes the decision.
But not today.
When would council make this? It would be a future workshop for council?
Yes, most likely in September.
We'd motion today.
Yes, we would motion today if we want, which is probably good, because this is our third kind of time around.
Okay.
So I'll open it up for the rest of the group here. I see both right and left. I don't know who is first. Do you have a question?
I have a lot.
Oh, that's right. Go for it.
Okay. Not so much question, but my understanding, and asking for clarification or education, whatever I need, some of these are actually for the public and other members, because if we don't motion today, like I said, this is my last meeting, and I won't be here for another one. So option three, I like what you said about that. I didn't realize that's what it was. So option three, from what you said, is focused, is pretty much laser-focused on HUD's what they want.
Correct.
Okay. So that's interesting. Option, let's go to option one now. Option one, if we go with option one, everybody gets a little bit of the piece of the pie, and that's why we had you ask, you know, is it worth giving somebody less? And I really want to give kudos to everybody that responded to that. I read those letters, and some of them were very informative, and for those people, I wanted to, really, part of me just wanted to go, let's just give them all the money, because they're the only ones that responded. But we can't do that. So, but kudos. I mean, I was really, really impressed with some of the letters. Other letters, it was like, yeah, they just did it to get their name in the hat, which I wasn't impressed with, but I did like a lot of them. Option one is just that. It's a little bit of everybody. Nobody gets more than, well, one of them gets more than, two of them, one of them gets 50%, one gets a little more than 50%, and everybody else gets less than 50% of what they wanted, the way I see it. Option two. Option two cuts out two of the people. Now, also, what I did on my copies is I grouped together all the City of Pasco things, because my question is basically, if we, okay, so let me go back to option two, I'm sorry. Option two, we cut out two of the people that are not Pasco and left the other two that are in there. There's basically four people that are not the City of Pasco in some shape or form, and we left two in there and took out two because of your scoring. So if we go to option three, which, like I said, I like what you said, because I understand the importance of following what HUD and looking at what HUD needs, because the way I understand it, they're in a shift of how they're doing things and how they're going to do things in the future as far as emphasis or monies, correct?
Correct. So, yeah, so we had a meeting with, a regional meeting with HUD of everybody in Washington, and their biggest emphasis was that they want to see the cities that receive funding to go back to housing, which is originally what the funding was for, and then over the years, they've added other funding, economic development, public facilities, you know, code enforcement, public services to a certain extent. But with the housing crisis all over, that was their biggest goal. They wanted to make sure people understood this share.
Okay. And I think that's important for the public to hear as well, because that's why we're having a problem making these decisions, and we're just not pencil-whipping it, basically, right? Because we want to do what's right by HUD. So if we go to option three, which is more in lines with HUD, it takes out everybody that's not city. So if we're going to do that, why have an application process?
It takes out the public services.
It takes out everybody that's not city. Everything else has Pasco city written by it.
We have the housing authorities in there. They're not the city.
Okay, Franklin County. Okay, Franklin, it takes everybody that's not government out.
Mm-hmm. Yes. And, well, you know, we still have to have an application process. You can't just say, oh, you're a public service activity, so you can't apply.
But if we go with option three, we're basically, without saying the words, we're telling the public that, you could put in for it, but you know what? Last year, you didn't, nobody got anything. So we're almost, I don't know, I think we're working against ourselves as a city if we do that, although I like what you said about it, so I'm conflicted. You see what I'm saying? I'm kind of conflicted there, and I was wondering if you could help with that, or Jacob or somebody.
Mr. Chair and commissioners, if I may, I'd like to add a little bit of additional information that might kind of help out with that a little bit. Again, just as a reminder, I'm Craig Raymond, I'm the deputy director for CED. You know, and when I was looking at this, there was one thing that really struck me is that the public services applications really were pretty low-scoring overall. So I really just kind of took a look at, how do we categorize and score, you know, these applications? And really, if, when you look at the chart under the previous, was 1 through 4 was a C, 5 through 9 B, and so on, there was no six, sevens, or eights at all. There was a pretty big disparity between the low-scoring projects and the ones that were really kind of much higher, of course, 15 being the highest score. So, and honestly, I didn't even look at who they were or what they were. I just noticed that disparity between a couple of few fives, very low-scoring projects, and then the much higher scoring. And I thought, well, it allows us the opportunity to concentrate a larger amount of money with the higher-scoring projects, and without regard to the specifics of government, non-government, or really what projects were low-scoring, other than the fact that they were low-scoring. So I thought, well, let's take them out and see what it looks like, and this is where we're at.
But wouldn't we expect the government, the people that are behind all this, to actually be high-scoring anyway?
Not necessarily.
And if we're not, then maybe we need to change some of the people that are in those government positions.
Yeah, not necessarily, because HUD's the one that writes the rules rather than here locally, so that's kind of, you know, the essence of that.
I see. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Crutchfield, I have a couple things to say. I think pretty much all of these things are very important, and in a way, I think they kind of interface with one another, kind of, but in keeping in mind the goal of the Community Development Block Grant Program and the goals of the council, which, you know, the quality of life, economic viability, the identity of the community. So I like option three, because I think that it does address those goals. I do have a question about other opportunities for funding of some of these things that I do think are very important. You don't want to leave those out of being important, such as domestic violence, certainly, and YMCA, that's been around for probably 100 years or so. So are those entities able to get funding elsewhere? So even if we see that this particular block grant is not getting their request, it doesn't mean that they're just being discounted or not recognized or helped.
Correct. Yes.
I do have a question about the code, because, again, I think these things with the city just do help bolster those other programs, because they do help with economic viability, the safety, and all of those things. But I did have a question. I'm very much a proponent of the code enforcement and the rental inspection, but I wondered if there was a breakdown at all of this 210-some-thousand in just what is involved with that? I mean, the car maybe would be involved. I know, I kind of did a little bit of calculation as far as, and this, I don't know if my math was right on this, but like, with how many inspections would that provide? If you have 250 days, workdays out of the year, and you do so many inspections, then per day, somewhere along the line, you could come up, maybe they would only be doing two inspections a day. So is that...
So in their application, the 210,000 was actually for three rental inspectors.
Oh.
Yeah, and because that would take the majority of our money, of our funding, we actually asked them, well, what would it be for one? And so, yeah, so the 70,000 would still be for one rental inspector.
Well, I think we definitely need at least one, if not more. Three, certainly, with the way our city is growing and with all the housing development that we are not only required, I guess, by state, but we want to do. And we want to make it safe, we want to make it attractive, and that benefits the whole community, not just the people that live in those particular areas. I think that was it. I think you answered my other question earlier. Thank you.
One thing to remind everybody, too, is remember, last year, we made a recommendation on specifically the code enforcement and other areas, where we said we need the council to seek other ways of funding code enforcement. So we can still continue that recommendation to say, hey, we're recommending one FTE for code enforcement, but we really like three. You need to find other money, because three is important, and we can still make those recommendations. That's what we did last year as well. And so I would encourage us to do that, because, you know, if, to the point, if we funded all three, it would take a big chunk of the money, and it would lose. Did you have some?
Yeah. So 70 for one code enforcement, would that be paying for one that currently exists, or would that be adding one to the pot?
It currently pays for the one that we have.
I understand. So we really, we're helping fund, but we're not adding anything to the dire need of adding more code enforcement officers.
Correct.
I understand. Thank you.
I'm going to go to the online, because I know that there's a couple folks online. Did you have any questions or feedback online?
Hi, this is Commissioner Torres. Yeah, the only feedback I think is around, again, the commissioner, the inspector. I think I still have, you know, reservations about funding, you know, a position out of grant money, and how sustainable, you know, doing something like that is, you know, going forward. And also, because, you know, it just seems like this is something that should be part of kind of operating, you know, normal operations of the city, and so using grant money for normal operations, I think is just kind of getting us into dangerous water. So, you know, just that comment, and then I think in general, I think option three is probably, I think, a little bit more in line with what I think the block grant was intended to cover and what HUD, you know, perceives as kind of the priorities. And so I think that actually, you know, if we could maybe make a, my thought would be to go with option three, and then, but without the code enforcement inspector funding and having those funds reallocated to some of the other items on that option three. So that would just be my suggestion.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, the other thing is, after we finish discussion, anyone is able to move to recommend any option? So let's see if there's any more comments or questions, and if you'd like to make a motion, we can certainly do that. Anybody else online?
This is Commissioner Teal. I'll just, I'll kind of second what Commissioner Torres had said. I think my only difference in what she had mentioned is, I would just like to make that recommendation to council to seek funding next time, like we did last year. So that's kind of my only difference in that. I just don't see it happening this year, and would like to keep that going, because I think it is important to have that inspector onboard. But just reiterating with an exclamation mark that we would like the city to seek other funding sources in the future.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think the message you want to send is proper code enforcement shouldn't depend on HUD grant funding, and we want proper code enforcement, and it shouldn't depend on this grant.
Yeah. And, Mr. Chair, I just want to let you know, I did put a comment in your staff report that does say, "The Planning Commission has communicated to staff their preference to discontinuing funding city salaries. With that being said, the role of the rental inspector with the code division is a critical component of the Community Development Block Grant Program. This position ensures that rental properties comply with health and safety standards, thereby enhancing the quality of housing and promoting community well-being, which aligns with the goals of the CDPG program." And just to clarify, that 70,000 does not completely pay for that inspector's. The city does pay for the rental inspector's car and benefits and other part of their salary and stuff.
That's helpful. Thank you. I think, you know, maybe the, again, the recommendation is, you know, we're trying to recommend helping with HUD funds, but the city should properly fund this, because it's an important function for all the inspectors, all three. Okay, any other, you have, go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner Moffett here. I just want to speak on the code enforcement thing as well. So I'm with you 100%. I get the need for the code enforcement, but I just wanted to comment on the other commissioners' comments. I've worked for a city for almost my whole career, in one way or another, mostly as a law enforcement officer, and I cannot tell you how, historically, how many positions within any city are funded by block grants, some kind of block grants, this grant, that grant, they're funded by grants. So to say that they shouldn't be funded by grants, you're going to, if you did that across the board, you'd wipe out what you currently have for safety, because I know a lot of police officers are on grants, that's how they get hired, especially right after 9/11, when we did a big influx, and it would not surprise me, I'm not asking you, but it wouldn't surprise me if somebody sitting across the room isn't partially funded on block grants, or fully funded by block grants. So to say that a city person, code enforcement shouldn't be funded, I disagree with, I don't disagree with, we need to find more funding. We want more code enforcement, and they don't have them. So if we don't give something, we might lose one, and we can't afford to lose a half of one, much less one. So that's all I had to say on it.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Otherwise, certainly entertain a motion for any of the options.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt option three with...
That recommendation.
With the recommendation that our chairman had put forth about the council entertaining other avenues for funding code enforcement staffs in the future.
Great. It's been moved by Commissioner Crutchfield to offer option three with the recommendation that the city councils also seek additional funds to fully support code enforcement, as well as other city positions as well. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Moffett.
This is Commissioner Teal. I second that.
Give it to Teal.
Okay. Commissioner Teal has seconded it. All those in favor of option three with our recommendation say, wait, before I do that, point of order, do we have enough of a quorum for me not to vote? Because my... Okay.
Correct. You do have a sufficient quorum for you to recuse yourself if you choose.
Great. I'll go ahead and recuse myself. All in favor of option three with the recommendation, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Option three passes unanimously with the recommendation to see, city seek additional funding for code enforcement. Thank you, staff, for all the hard work you did on this community block grant. I'm glad that we can get this to council and hopefully get it to the applicants as soon as we can. All right. The next order of business is the home block grant allocation program, which is MFBGAP 2024-004. So that's also in your packet. It's, looks remarkably the same, so you have to look for home. looks remarkably the same, so you have to look for home.
Commission, Pasco entered into a home consortium agreement with Kennewick and Richland in nineteen ninety six, making the cities eligible for federal home dollars. Each member is allocated an equal share of the entitlement after ten percent is set aside for the lead agency to administer the program, which currently is Richland, and fifteen percent set aside for Community Housing Development Organization, Archero, which currently is Habitat for Humanity. The estimated entitlement funds for Pasco is one sixteen, one sixty, estimated program income is a hundred thousand dollars. These funds are from down payment assistance payoffs. We are budgeting ninety eight thousand and eighty dollars for rehabilitation slash acquisition. The consortium is going to pull our funds together to acquire a house, then rehab it and turn around and sell it to a low income family. Down payment assistance, we are anticipating ten thousand dollars of only doing one as the purchase limit set by HUD for Pasco currently is three hundred and forty seven thousand dollars, which means the purchase limit can't be more than that. It was supposed to increase in July, but we're still waiting. Uh, on that note as well, the home consortium is working with a real estate agencies to help rebrand our down payment assistance program and get the word out there that the three cities are offering this and they are very, um, excited and encouraging that they feel they have houses out there that can be bought and use the home, the down payment assistance. And then also ninety eight thousand and eighty will go to tenant based rental assistance. The consortium currently has a contract with CAC, which is Community Action Connect, Connection to administer that program for the three cities. Program administration for ten thousand dollars and that's for Pasco staff to administer the program. And that's it.
Excellent, and, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember we talked about this last time and based on what you said previously about HUD and their emphasis on housing, that's how you chose these priorities as well?
These priorities are actually the only ones that home will allow you to do.
Okay. All right, commissioners, any questions? Again, we have this on the table as old business. It is our option to ask more questions, continue the discussion, or there is a motion in your packet to move it forward to the city council workshop, uh, as we did, just did with the community development block grant. So questions or feedback for staff on this?
Commissioner Moffett, so I just, I just have a quick question, cause I don't really know how this works. So a low income person, a family comes in and buys this after an application process or something like that, I assume. Just curious, so if they buy it and they, are, are they buying it for the, at cost? Or are they buying it and there might be some profit? And if there's a profit, where does that go?
There would be no profit, so if the, yeah, so what the city bought the land for and rehabbed the house for, that's what we would turn around and sell the house for. Then that money would go back into our program and then we would try to purchase another house and do it again.
Any other questions or comments or feedback? Online?
Nope.
Okay, well, I guess the next step is I would entertain a motion on this or, or, uh, other questions or comments?
Commissioner Moffett, I move the planning commission forward, the recommendations is presented to the city council workshop for consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Moffett has moved to recommend to city council, um, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Crutchfield has seconded, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passed unanimously, thank you. And we move into our final item, which is the workshop item. Is, uh, our favorite topic, the overnight truck rehabitation topic and, uh, staff continues to take our feedback and make excellent progress, so we're looking forward to the discussion and thank you for all the work. I know it's a bit tedious when nothing else exists to start from, so.
Good evening commissioners, I'm Jen Ballard, senior planner with the city. Sorry, I just thought your intro was quite amusing. So we're discussing CA twenty twenty four dash zero zero one, which is the overnight truck parking and habitation. This was the ci- citizen initiated code amendment because a developer was interested in one of the applicants or citizens' properties. And so far this year, the planning commission has held, held a public hearing, several workshops and meetings, uh, we've created a definition of what overnight truck parking and habitation is for the city and created draft ordinance language. Last meeting, we, um, y'all reviewed the draft ordinance, made recommendations and proposed changes. And so tonight, uh, staff is hoping we can review uh, the language, make sure it meets all of planning commission's recommendations. Now your packets have much more detailed list of your recommendations and summaries. But, uh, generally, yeah, the planning commission requested that only the industrial zoning districts, uh, would host overnight truck parking and habitation. And, uh, if the use wasn't kept up, uh, there was a request that their, um, approval could somehow be revoked if the site wasn't maintained. You wanted the location and design of the facilities in such a way to reduce impact to residential zoning districts, existing residential uses and parks. You requested that amenities for site users be provided, which include restrooms, green space, pet amenities and potable water, and that the properties should be clean, safe and secure for the users and for the surrounding community. So, uh, this is a chart that just goes over the proposed regulations. The actual draft ordinance language is in your packets. The text in red are changes that were made from the ordinance that you reviewed on July eighteenth. So we have overnight truck habitation, um, parking permitted as a primary use. In I one, I two and I three, so those are the industrial zoning districts only, and it's gonna be permitted, uh, via special permit as a conditional use. So that means it would go before the hearing examiner. That there would be a maximum stay of seventy two hours on site in a ninety six hour period. The access to and from the site would be, uh, via highways and local truck routes per the Pasco municipal code. That there would be a thousand foot buffer from residential and mixed use zoning districts from existing residential uses, parks and schools. The facility design, uh, would have a maximum size of fifteen acres. The, and, uh, the design for, say, turning radius and parking for the trucks would be based on a sixty seven foot wheel based tractor trailer, which would create a seventy four foot truck. The parking and drive aisle surface would be pavement. On site, there would be twenty four hour management. The gate, um, that would be part of the fence that would enclose the entire site, would have a security camera. The gate would automatically open and close behind each truck or behind each pedestrian. The perimeter fencing would be required, no matter if a, the truck parking was a primary or an accessory use, so. Uh, truck parking that's part of a truck stop, for example, that would also be required to be fenced under this, uh, draft ordinance. The lighting standards, uh, is considered safety lighting, um, and that has, was unchanged from last, uh, draft ordinance. For landscaping and screening, uh, there was best practices language added from the Pasco municipal code RV park chapter. And, uh, the chapter twenty five, one eighty, uh, that has landscape and screening standards, um, would, sorry, the landscape and screening standards for industrial land would apply from that chapter. Next slide, please. The onsite signage, uh, we added, uh, per planning commission request, the code enforcement officers' phone number and the Benton Franklin Health District phone number to the required signage onsite. There is a requirement for solid waste management for particular number of trashcans per stall, for parking stall. The facility ha- has language, um, that the facility has to be maintained free of litter and garbage. Also has truck, sorry, um, RV park language added into this section and there's a c- commercial dumpster requirement. The required amenities are permanent single occupancy restrooms that are connected to city sewer and temperature controlled, the requested pet relief areas, potable water, and there's a list of additional amenities that are required per thirty parking stalls and those amenities ca- can be chosen from a list by the applicant. Also added a section on accessory uses, just to codify that management and maintenance buildings, guardhouses, recreational facilities, restrooms, et cetera, are considered a pertinent, uh, accessories to the primary use of truck parking. Next slide, please. So this map is, it shows the whole city. So you can see where, um, most of the land in the city is contained within that thousand foot buffer. It's pretty much just the land that's along the three ninety five corridor and the, um, A Street and, um, Ainsworth kind of industrial area that is outside of the thousand foot buffer and is owned appropriately that you would be able to cite a truck parking facility there. Next slide, please. And this next slide, the sections in pink are property that, while not zoned industrial, has a future, a comp plan, future land use designation that would allow it to be rezoned to industrial if, uh, an applicant so chose. You can see that it's very limited, pretty much around the three ninety seven, three ninety five, uh, corridor. And at the very top on the right hand side of the map, those two pink properties, right now, those are truck stops already. Just to give you, uh, an overview.
Would that bottom pink part help the previous applicant that started this?
No, can you go back to the prior slide? Can you, um, show where the prior applicant had his?
He may be just mistaken on the old, the area he wanted. So he wanted up there, the pink is down there, okay.
Yeah, so. And speaking of what the applicant wants, could you go to the very last slide? So, uh, as you see, the, uh, the applicant that requested this co- code amendment, they, uh, requested it because they had a particular site that they owned, that they had been contacted by a developer that had an interest in developing truck parking. This draft ordinance excludes that target site, uh, for multiple reasons. One, it's zone C three, so it's not in one of the chosen industrial zones. It's within a thousand feet of existing residential uses, it actually backs up right against a residential neighborhood. It's also within, um, a thousand feet of residential zoned properties as well. So the applicant has technically withdrawn from the amendment process. Staff believes that this is such an important use, uh, and Washdot has identified truck parking in Pasco as a need. So staff recommends that the code amendment process proceed despite, um, the applicant withdrawing. And that, uh, staff requested the planning commission, uh, schedule a second public hearing.
Great, thank you, um, the, um, so if, even if we were to put back, I mean, we remove C three from consideration, but to me, if, even if you put C three back, it still meet, doesn't meet it because of a thousand foot buffers anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I have a couple of questions, so you stated that Washdot has, um, recommended or, um, suggested that this be placed in Pasco? You said in Pasco, but I wondered, um, because it's, you know, I realize that there's an identified need for this nationally, were we identified as the city that should have this or?
Uh, we were identified in, um, I think a twenty twenty two freight report, I'd have to get back to you on the, the title, that there's two locations in Pasco that are subject to, um, undesigned truck parking right now.
But they're doing it anyway, but in other words, um, it's something that we can research perhaps with not real urgency because it's not being mandated or, or that. I was just thinking, if Washdot is thinking that this is something that's needed nationally, maybe they have like model ordinances or things of that nature because you've done a lot of work here, certainly since the January eighteenth, when, uh, a, a home, uh, lot owner, property owner came and wanted to do something on their property, but clearly it would have impacted negatively other parties and so it, it's been revamped and I appreciate that from the things that you've outlined here. But again, it's a huge project or has a big, when it's kind of, um, in its infancy, at least here in this area, or even on this side of the state, is my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, as our chairman mentioned in one meeting, we don't want this to end up like, did you say Little Wyoming or was it Little Montana? Oh, Little America, okay, well, um, and that concerns me greatly about the urgency of this and, um, you know, pursuing it based on one applicant coming forward and saying, hey, I wanna do this and, um, so I, I really appreciate your work and how you've, you know, kind of fine tuned this, but I think a project of that magnitude still may take a little bit more, um, thought before or investigation or, um, information more widespread before we jump into something, as you pointed out, I think earlier in the beginning of your presentation, it was something along the lines of if they're not following what we want them to do, then we can just set in motion, um, ways to revoke what they're doing. That's difficult, once people have started doing things, I think it's difficult. That's just my, my feeling on it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Crutchfield, yeah. I do think that, um, I mean, I always, I, I, as I looked at this in preparation for the meeting, I like the idea that we're leaning forward, but I think to your point, we do have time, but I don't think you're suggesting we approve this and this is a workshop, we would still need a public hearing, we would still need uh, maybe multiple public hearings, we need council's approval, so all we're saying tonight is, you know, do we think it's worthwhile proceeding to public hearing, I think is really well what you're asking for, which is fine. The only other comment I would make about what I see in the regulation is I, I kinda felt myself wondering if we had just regulated it out of existence, right? And so I, I always believe that public policy should talk about, um, be focused on the what and the why and outcome based versus the how. And I, I kinda felt a little bit that we spent a lot of time on the how in this and, um, it maybe gets too prescriptive and we rate, and maybe it's the right thing that we regulated this particular applicant out of existence. But I guess my caution would be, if this is a need and we have people parking along the Pasco highways on three ninety five and three ninety seven anyway, it would be worth to do it in a thoughtful way and have a regulation that was balanced and not over prescriptive. But, um, I also would hesitate to try to, I mean, we've already been pretty strict. The other thing is I think I don't, maybe all of us don't understand the power of a special permit and how some of the things that we worry about can be accomplished with special permitting. And maybe staff, if you have some feedback on, cause I think that's what we don't always understand is the what we don't always understand, is the power of special permitting, and we try to put so much into the prescriptive of the ordinance and special permitting, and it can actually save us from a lot.
Yeah, with respects to special permits, special permits are, it's an application that, one, is conducted in front of our hearing examiner through a public hearing, so there's, if there is a project that requires special permit, in this case, based on the proposal as written today, would require a special permit, a notice would go out to properties within a distance of that surrounding property in question, and they would all be afforded, obviously, an opportunity along with the general public to provide comment, along with the special permit criteria, it's much more precise than what is in the proposed ordinance, so there's language with respects to compatibility, looking at noise, the kind of things you'd want to take a look at for a special permit. And there's also an opportunity for a condition of approval, for conditions of approval, so if there was a, hard to hypothetically pick a project, but if there was a proposal for a project that needed extra mitigation for light, or noise, or whatever it may be, that project would likely receive some specifics with respects to conditions of approval, and the examiner would weigh those conditions based on their criteria and the application, and if approved, that permit is valid if they can comply with the conditions of approval, and if they don't comply, and there's an enforcement action needed, that's when you would go, you would mail a notice saying you're no longer compliant with the approval terms of your permit, and it could be revoked that way. So special permits are fairly, they're useful, and they hold a lot of weight behind them, that's why they're special permits, and the examiner looks at the criteria of the code, the application, the conditions of approval, along with a likely State Environmental Policy Act checklist, which itself can generate mitigations. So it's difficult to identify all of the potential mitigations on a code amendment proposal, but it is likely that's what's been proposed and shared with planning commission this evening, is fairly comprehensive, and because there's no model ordinance in place right now, without bragging too much, I would expect that this might be one that other agencies begin to look at for an example in the future.
Yeah, thank you for helping explain that. I do think, I mean, that's the thing is, right, rather than getting overly prescriptive in the ordinance, the special permit can weigh a bunch of criteria in front of the hearing examiner, and it can be very situational. It can say, well, this site has a school down the road, so we want these mitigations, versus actually being prescribing for, in every one-size-fits-all cookie cutter, they all have to meet that. So I think it's important we understand that special permitting does give us some of the things we desire, right? But anyway, I'll open it up for other, online or other questions, Commissioner Moffett, you have some?
Yes, first of all, great job. I love the fact that you addressed everything that was said here previously, and you actually did your homework and did, added things to that that needed to be in there. Looks like you adjusted things a little bit, and so I think you did an amazing job, first of all. Second, this is a process, and the ordinance, changing an ordinance, or making an ordinance in this case, we're not making something that's going to be in cement, so I think it's important to understand that if we pass this ordinance now, I'm not going to be here, unfortunately, because I'd really like to see this one to the end, but if those that are still here pass this ordinance, you're not saying this is the way it's going to be, and it's not going to change, you're saying this is our step-one ordinance, and we're going to change it probably down the road, because nobody's done this, we're breaking new ground. So if you're waiting for something perfect to come along, it's not going to happen. It's just not. No ordinance is ever that way. All ordinances change. You can probably pull any ordinance out from the original draft, and when it was passed, and then look at it now, and it's changed, because life goes on, and the public changes, and things change, and important things change. So, the fact that, you know, you're worried about making something that's, that may adjust here, or may not be right here, I guarantee you it won't be right, but it's a step in the right direction. And so, really, I've read through this, I've been at every meeting about this, and I like it. I like the way you did it, I think it's great, I think it's a great step-one. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. But as you said, special, the special permit process will clean it up where it needs to be cleaned up, and the ordinance will change as time goes on and passes on to where it needs to be. It doesn't fit what we, what the applicant did, and I didn't realize it backed up to residents, so thanks for sharing that, because that's, to me, that's a no-brainer, that's just, no, you know? So, ordinance has changed, this is going to change, but it's a great step forward, you put in everything, and kudos to staff. I love it, I'd vote for it the way it is now, if I could, but I'm not going to.
Thank you, Commissioner Moffett. And again, tonight, all we're doing is following staff's recommendation to go to a public hearing, which there's no motion, it's just, let's have a public hearing, so. Any on the phone, for the commissioners on the phone or online?
I don't hear anything. Go ahead.
I was going to say, this Commissioner Torres, I would just echo Commissioner Moffett's comments about, you know, there's not going to be something that's going to be perfect out the gate, and so I think, you know, using this very current process would be good.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Moffett.
I'm sorry, I had another, actually, the first question I wrote down here, it got lost in my writing. The fencing, I didn't notice before, but you said that it's required for the sec, what do you call it, secondary advisory, or something like that? Not the primary, but the secondary use, right? So the current truck stops, would they be grandfathered in and not have to have fencing? Or would they be made to have fencing? Or would another business exactly like that, the startup, it would have to be fenced? The current ones?
The current ones, they are grandfathered in.
So they would never have to have fencing?
They wouldn't be required under this ordinance to have fencing, as they are now.
Understand, thank you. I just thought they might want to hear that.
Thank you, anything else? And we require, there's no motion asked, it's just, can we have a public hearing? And I think it's probably worth a public hearing to see what people say, and this time, and correct me if I'm wrong, we had one, but there was no notice, that's why we need to have one?
No, there was a notice, it was properly advertised, we just didn't have an ordinance, and what the applicant was suggesting or hoping for is so different from this second draft of the ordinance language, that staff felt that it'd be appropriate to have more public comment.
Thanks. Okay, that's the last of our workshop business tonight. Anything else from staff?
Yes, commissioners, I do want to let the commission and the public know that we, that tonight, although not present, was the last night for Commissioner Paul Mendez. There's been a reappointment through the city council committee, so we will be welcoming a new planning commission member at the September meeting. And although Commissioner Mendez is not present, I still told him on the phone that I was going to mention a few things, that Commissioner Mendez has been serving the planning commission since 2015. He, along with all of those that have served on the planning commission, have been a part of several major planning efforts and community development-related efforts in the city of Pasco over the last several years. Hundreds of thousands of dollars allocated for community development block grant program, adoptions of comprehensive plans, the city's first downtown master plan, the city's first transportation plan, the city's first housing action plan. Since Commissioner Mendez's first date, the city's grown by nearly a quarter of its population, nearly twenty-five thousand residents during his time, so although he's not present, perhaps he's listening, and for those in the public, just wanted to, from staff, thank Commissioner Mendez for his time and the dedication to serving the public, and certainly to those of you currently serving the public via the planning commission, your time and commitment is acknowledged and well-appreciated by city staff, and I'm sure the public as well, so just wanted to share that with the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, on behalf of the planning commission, we thank you. We also thank Commissioner Mendez for his service. All right, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
You make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. To adjourn the meeting, we're adjourned at seven thirty-one PM. Thank you all.